Okay, all right. I'm just gonna get started, get everything going here. All right, I guess we'll get started. Good afternoon, thank you for joining us for our City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Renee Lindsay, President and CEO of the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce. The candidates running for Fortuna City Council are Councilmember Dean Glazier, Challenger Mike Losi, and Mayor Pro Tem Tammy Trent. Thank you all for being here, make sure your mute button is turned off so that we can hear you when you answer your questions. Today, we will ask the candidates six pre-arranged questions that cover a variety of topics. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question. We will start in alphabetical order and then rotate for each question. At the 22nd mark, I will wave my red sign, letting them know that it's time to wrap up. Each candidate will begin with an opening statement, limited to three minutes. At the conclusion of these questions, we will ask the candidates questions from the public. We have received three advanced questions from the public and we'll ask those first. They have not been shared with the candidates. For audience questions, we will limit the response to two minutes to allow as many questions as possible. If you would like to have your question considered, you can put your question in the chat function if you are joining us via the webinar or during the Facebook Live, showing you can put your question into the comment section. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Our moderator today is Melissa Sanderson from the North Coast Journal and current Fortuna Chamber Board Member. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll turn it over to Melissa for the rest of the candidate forum.
Dean, why don't you lead us in the flag salute?
Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome, all right, thank you. All right, well, thanks for being here and let's keep this nice and pleasant and we will get right through this. So, the first question is gonna go to Dean and then we're gonna follow it up by Mike and Tammy.
Were we gonna, Melissa, were we gonna do an opening statement first?
Oh yes, that's right, how could I forget? Three minutes and the opening statement is gonna go by the order of which we arrived. So Tammy Trent, three minutes, let's hear it.
Thank you, Melissa. Good afternoon, my name is Tammy Trent. I'm a longtime member of Chamber and have enjoyed Chamber events and have enjoyed many Chamber events in the past. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting this forum and giving me the opportunity to tell you why I am the best candidate for Fortuna City Council. I have owned a business in Fortuna for over 25 years. I have been on the Fortuna City Council since 2012. Prior to that, I served on the Planning Commission for 10 years. I am currently serving as Mayor Pro Tem. I also serve on boards and committees, including the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division as Second Vice President and the Public Safety Committee. I am on the Board for Humboldt Transit Authority and Hops in Humboldt. I also serve on two committees, including the Fortuna Fireworks Festival and the Senior Resource Advisory Committee. I'm actively working with the city manager to set a date for a workshop with the community, Chamber, Fbid, and city staff to look at Fortuna's commercial vacancies, including the old mill site, to re-envision what these spaces could become to attract new businesses to our town. Also exploring low, no-interest loan funds for Fortuna business landlords to improve the appearance of their buildings. When restaurants were forced into outside dining due to COVID restrictions, I went to the city and arranged to waive encroachment fees for outdoor seating, streamlined the approval process for same-day waivers, and made arrangements to loan city picnic tables to restaurants to provide outdoor seating. I have successfully lobbied for Measure Z funds from the Board of Supervisors to provide Fortuna with a school resource officer and a drug task force officer. Both of these positions have proven to be vital to the city of Fortuna. I have fought for the annual renewal of these funds every year with success. My goal with reelection is to get these crucial positions permanently funded. As your City Council member, my job has been to represent all the citizens of Fortuna. I am well-informed before making decisions. I will always protect the best interest of our city and citizens. I am looking forward to your vote for reelection and serving Fortuna for the next four years. We are a true community and I love Fortuna.
All right, great, thank you Tammy. Okay, next we're gonna go with Dean, being your time starts now.
Hello, everyone. In 2002, I came to the the forum that was being provided by the Chamber as a candidate for City Council. When my term came to provide my thoughts and visions of what I thought I would do, I changed the format and told you what Fortuna voters wanted by the scale of importance. Many of you were there and remember the single most important request by the citizens in Fortuna. It was the request for a big box shopping mall on the Palco property. Even though that has phased, with a lot of years going by, the citizens have yet to change their mind on this request. As a councilperson, we are supposed to comply by the citizens' requests by their majority vote. I would love to be able to follow through on that vision if the opportunity does come forward. My partnership as a councilman with the Chamber is and will always be, the city comes first and the Chamber comes second. It is not the Chamber comes first and the city behaves as though the Chamber wants. If an idea or a project is mutually supportive and doesn't require city subsidizing, I am in favor of that project. I want all of us to benefit in a positive direction with new businesses and commercial expansion when they become available. Let's make that happen together. I would also like to spend some time addressing one of the propositions. Actually, all the propositions on the ballot should be voted no, but one that should be addressed first and foremost is Prop 15. Prop 15 is an attack on Prop 13 that was created to be placed on the ballot and voted on unanimously by the voters in 1979. This was done by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers League. It froze the property tax assessment value on businesses and homes so that the tax assessors could not aggressively continue to use current levels of assessment as they want to do. A new home that's built is current assessment values. A home that is protected by Prop 13 is frozen in place and only will become current assessed values when that home is transferred from ownership or sold out of the family's ownership. Prop 15 does not do anything for funding the the schools, it's a trick verbiage to convince people that money for schools is the only reason. Prop 13 needs to be perpetuated, Prop 15 must aggressively be voted down. Many of you that are Chamber members probably are under this protection level either by your ownership or by your landlords. You must be aware of the fact that Prop 15 is an attack on Prop 13's protection. If Prop 15 does perchance pass, which I hope it does not, because this is the second attempt by the legislatures to pass it, then the immediate attack will occur on ownership of homes and that is not what we want. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks Dean. I will mute, I have that power, so if you guys get out of line, I got a button. All right, Mike, you're up now, three minutes.
Thank you, Melissa, I'll remember the button. Mike Losi, and I am running for the Fortuna City Council. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Renee, and Melissa for allowing us to take part in this forum for the voters of Fortuna. I have the proven leadership qualities, experience, and common sense in decision-making, which sets me apart from the other candidates. I served for four years on the Fortuna City Council with two years as Mayor Pro Tem. I also served eight years on the Fortuna High School Board of Trustees with three years as President of the Board. I have 34 years of law enforcement experience, most of those years at the county level. I started my law enforcement career right here in Fortuna as a police officer. So I have an unwavering support for Fortuna, the public safety and welfare of our citizens. I believe that fiscal stewardship is always of the utmost importance regarding the city finances and expenditures. I also know the value of trusted and experienced city employees and the cost to the city to lose those employees. I have demonstrated in my past council and Board of Trustees experience that my common sense approach is invaluable in solving problems. I believe that the city should take a lead role in helping to meet the needs of seniors, families, youth, and children during this health crisis and beyond. In addition, the city needs to take an active role in supporting a strong and vibrant local economy, supporting local businesses, and finding solutions for the Riverwalk and Old Mill Site areas. We need to support and advocate for our businesses' fair share of the national, state, and local funding, including CARE Act money, to help local businesses with the COVID-19 immediate needs. I believe in fiscal stewardship and that the city must effectively manage our tax dollars for the best use in protecting public safety, promoting businesses, and providing recreational opportunities for all people. I'm asking that you join my family, friends, and neighbors in voting for me, Mike Losi, for Fortuna City Council. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, now we'll get into it. Okay, our first question is gonna go to Dean and it is, Recology recently announced that they were permanently closing the CRV buyback program at the transfer station here in Fortuna. The only other redemption center is in Eureka, managed by Humboldt Waste Management Authority. After being open for two days, they had to close it due to the amount of people that showed up. If Humboldt Waste Management also permanently closes their buyback program, what options do residents have? How will residents receive the CRV tax they've already paid for? Okay, Dean, take it away.
Thank you. CalRecycle, which is the state's organization that is responsible for this unfortunate fiasco, needs to change its policy, but from standpoint as a councilperson, we can we can send a letter to our supervisors, we could also send, have them send a letter to our elected officials, Mike McGuire, Jim Wood, and Mr. Huffman. Their pressure has to be placed on the legislatures in Sacramento to change the policies that are in place. It is unfortunate that there are no facilities for this, it is a fiasco, as I mentioned, and it cannot be rectified unless we have Sacramento, first and foremost, change the cease and desist any kind of charges at the facilities that are charging it for the grocery stores and the sales locations. I don't know how many people in Fortuna are impacted by this, but for now, it's just wait and see what our elected officials will do to comply to our requests. I'm supportive of what direction they go, but as long as they don't do anything and stall, which will probably happen for months to come, we will be victims of overcharging for CRV charges and continue to collect these if that was one of your choices. The suggestion to go to Oregon to cash them in at Fred Meyer's or a facility up there is pretty much out of place because the gas that's gonna be utilized for you to get there is gonna be burned up by what you just collected from your CRV. So it's not practical. Our elected officials are the ones we need to pressure and to say, we support you, we elected you, now you need to support our communities. Thank you.
Okay, great, Mike, you're up next now, and then followed by Tammy.
Thank you, Melissa. Ecology of the Eel River is not currently required to take the cans and bottles and pay back the deposit that the consumer paid at the time of purchase. Grocery stores, on the other hand, are working hard on exactly how they would deal with this issue if the state fails to enact a policy or law that addresses the return of deposits on this fee. Since this was enacted by the state legislature, it only makes sense that the state should address this problem. The city of Fortuna has a contract with Recology for services within the city limits. That contract ends this calendar year, so the city could propose, in a new contract, a stipulation requiring Recology to accept the recycles and pay for the CRV deposits. That could be the simplest short-term solution to the huge amount of bottles and cans building up in people's yards, garages, and closets, as well as an answer to those folks who depend on the buyback. In addition, many people would sell back the CRV deposits to put on an account, often for youth groups, whether it was a school group, a civic organization, or a social cause. Those accounts have gone by the wayside and could be reinstated by Recology with a new contract. I do believe that this is an important issue that affects many in our community. There are some folks in Fortuna, seniors especially, who depend on the CRV buyback to sustain themselves. And I would be in favor of addressing this buyback issue, as I said before, during contract negotiations with Recology of the Eel River. The state of California could address this in the long term if they are to continue the CRV fee at purchase. With proposing the CRV buyback during negotiations with Recology, the city can solve the short-term issue and can help seniors, youth, and everyone else to once again be paid for the deposits that they paid at the checkout counter.
All right, Tammy?
Thank you. This is a problem in many areas of the state. Due to the crash in the recycling market, it is no longer cost-effective for Recology to participate in the buyback program. This problem needs to be fixed at the state level. I have been in contact and continue to be in contact with Assemblymember Wood's office. The Assembly and the Senate will not be back in session until the first of the year. I was assured Assemblymember Wood is working on this. California Beverage Containing, Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act requires beverage dealers who sell a variety of groceries with a gross annual income of $2 million or more redeem beverage containers on-site unless there is a state-certified redemption center located within a convenience zone of three miles, which that's what Recology was, that was their convenience center. A retailer in an unserved convenience center, one without functioning redemption center, may choose to pay $100 a day for redeeming, if there's no redemption site, but none of our businesses can really afford to pay $100 a day because we don't have recycling. Currently, there is no place to redeem CRV tax for our residents and the customers, let's see, to buy back the products. So, actually, the stores are required to do it with the act, but since they don't have recycling centers and it's not feasible for them to do it, that's why Recology is doing it. We can't force Recology to do it, they're just the convenience center. So hopefully, at the state level, we can get something worked out when the senators and the assembly go back to session. Thank you.
Okay, great, we're one down, you guys, a lot more to go. Okay, the first, the second question, we're gonna start with Mike this time and then we're gonna go to Tammy and we're gonna follow it up with Dean. Okay, so on this year's ballot is Measure G, the 3/4% sales tax. If passed, the tax will not expire until March 31st of 2033. How has this money been spent in the past and why should voters extend this tax past the current 2025 sunset date? And what steps have you taken to ensure passage? All right, Mike, again followed by Tammy and then Dean, I'm at it.
Thank you, Melissa. The money from this tax initiative has in the past supplemented the city of Fortuna's annual budget and has been utilized in a variety of departments. The funds have paid for two detectives, a problem-oriented police officer, also known as a POP officer, one community service officer, and a part-time code compliance officer. The funds have also paid for street and storm drain maintenance, a parks and recreation director, hydration stations, and wheel lights in parks, in the parks. Additional recreational programs for seniors and youth, and also transportation for seniors to their doctor's appointments in Fortuna and Eureka. There are a variety of other projects that the funds have been used for, including completing the Roanoke Flood Control Project, which I have voted in favor of when I was on the City Council. The city needs to effectively manage these tax dollars and the continuation of the Community Oversight Committee. The City Council can identify where these funds should go to best serve the citizens of Fortuna. During this campaign, I've been canvassing our neighborhoods throughout our town and I've talked to many people about the necessity of passing Measure G and the benefits that the city will receive as a result of extending this sales tax. It is important to note that this is a continuation of the sales tax we already pay. In addition, I've placed yard signs in residences throughout the city, asking people to vote for Measure G. My wife and I have also given a donation to the campaign to help pass Measure G. Long-range planning is important for the city of Fortuna to anticipate the ongoing needs of our citizens. The city received many grants and loans, which often require that the city provide proof of the means to repay long-term loans and to provide evidence of the sustainability of continued services. In addition, the city must keep the qualified personnel that we have. Measure G will help the city of Fortuna to maintain our important city services and help to ensure our city will continue to be the best place to live, work, play, and grow for families, youth, children, and seniors. Please join me and my family and vote yes for Measure G in Fortuna.
Great, thanks, Mike. Tammy?
Thank you. Measure G is not a new tax, it's an extension of Measure E. It is currently 75 cents on $100, which is very little, and it stays in Fortuna. Measure E generates approximately $1.4 million per year. With these funds, the city has funded over $250,000 in street maintenance and paving that otherwise would have not been possible. Repairs on failing storm drains, and repairs on failing storm drains. We have received grants that require a match, such as the Hillside Creek Flood Project. This FEMA grant, in the amount of $1.9 million, requires a city match of $650,000. This will eliminate the flooding along Fortuna Boulevard. Remapping of this flood plain is expected to be completed in 2021. This will allow homeowners and businesses along Fortuna Boulevard who are required to pay expensive flood insurance to no longer have to do that. The city would not be able to get this grant without Measure E. 54% of Measure E goes to public safety. This includes two detectives who have been solving crimes and making arrests quickly because they don't have to do patrol. They work with social services to help with the homeless, they conduct probation and parole checks, and work on removing illegal campsites throughout the city. This measure also funds a code compliance officer and a community service officer. The city expects to purchase and train a canine later this year. Measure E funds, fund our park and recreation director, funded the replacement of ball-filled lights in Newburgh Park and hydration stations throughout the park and purchased new rollerskates. Measure E funds the city's transit to take seniors to Eureka for medical appointments. Passing Measure G is essential for Fortuna and its citizens. Without it, we would not have any of these grants or improvements or services. I have been out in the community, knocking on doors, handing out hundreds of flyers, and talking to residents about how important this is to the city of Fortuna. It is essential that we get this passed again. Please vote for Measure E, or Z, G, I'll get it right. Thank you.
Tammy, G. All right, Dean, you're up.
Thanks, Melissa. Prior to the loss of funding that we were available, available to be able to actually utilize and balance our budget, which was a redevelopment fund, of that amount, about $500,000 was placed into balancing the budget. Unfortunately, the redevelopment agency's funding was taken away by the state, by an aggressive governor who felt that it was his, not ours. So, from that point on, the difficulty of balancing our budget was first and foremost in our face, making it difficult to be always in the black. When Measure E was first attempted, the verbiage on it was horrible, the public turned it down aggressively. The second time it came about, for the 2016 ballot, Tammy and Sue Long spent an immense amount of time going out and canvassing the public and promoting what the benefits were gonna be. It took a year, but once it passed, it took a year for the funding that we were gonna be able to utilize for balancing the budget actually appeared. It was projected to be $1.2 million and it actually came in pretty darn close to that. Each year it increased and it actually peaked out to $1.6 million. The public should know that we have an actual transparent E committee that takes requests from the city's departments and they promote and suggest to the council what their usages are. We, as a council, do not pick and choose because that would be rather improper for us. It is unfortunate that the virus has come and sort of taken the wind out of the success our city has had, but that money will come back as Measure E. It will, we will rebound. The Measure G is an effort to allow the sunset timeline to be extended, as it was mentioned, eight years. And it is first and foremost that hopefully that the public does embrace that, that we do not have to take quality time from addressing other issues in the city to promote another passage of another 10-year E measure. Measure G is, as it was mentioned, is not an increase, again, it is only an extension of the sunset time and I'm truly hoping that the public understands that, that they embrace that and they know the full benefits of that. Over the years, the purse payments, the medical and workman's comp have continually gone up and they are irreversibly continually decline and it takes the wind out of what money we get from revenues, sales tax revenues. It makes it impossible to balance a budget. The money has been utilized immensely, to a positive note, and thank you very much, Melissa.
All right, I almost muted you, well, you made it. Okay, here we go. This one's a good one, number three, we're gonna start with Tammy, you get to answer this one first, followed by Dean and Mike. At the recent City Council meeting, administrative fines for municipal code violations were approved by the council. One example of code violation retaining, for not retaining a business license, is a violation. How do you, how does the city plan to enforce these types of violations? Will it be complaint-driven? Tammy?
Thank you. The council did approve administrative fines for municipal code violations at our last meeting. The second reading of that will be at tonight's meeting. The ordinance is intended to provide local enforcement officials the ability to assure issue administrative citations for violations of the Fortuna Municipal Code. the ability to assure issue administrative citations for violations of the Fortuna Municipal Code. An administrative citation is a written order to pay a fine to the city for a violation of the Fortuna Municipal Code. Days allowed by law is subject to a late fine, a late fee and the possibility of civil action to collect the debt. Fines arising from real property violations allow the city to record a lien against the amount due. Fortuna does have a code enforcement officer, but a lot of the violations will be complaint driven. As this, as far as the business license, since that one was brought up, the finance department will be calling and sending out letters to businesses with expired or no business license. After the second noticed, notice, they will be given a fine. So hopefully we can get the, the business license all back in order. In the past, there was no form of making people pay for their license or, you know, if you didn't follow the municipal code, there wasn't anything the city could do about it. So basically what this does is it gives our people the ability to make this happen, to force it to happen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Dean?
I'm back, good. You as business people should be complimenting the city staff and the council for passing stricter and more costly fines for code and ordinance violations. It is the council's constant duty to protect the health, safety and welfare of Fortuna's citizens. When a business chooses to ignore current codes and ordinances, the city has the legal right to deter these actions promptly and aggressively. If you watched our September 21 Zoom meeting, you know there were illegal grows being described happening within city limits. Their disregard for our ordinances and codes was blatant and above the law. The city now has the authority to fine them $1,000 a day and even shut them down entirely. As was mentioned by Tammy, the second reading of that, that ordinance will occur to tonight and it will take 30 days before it could be placed into action. Because these administrative fines are new, the city will observe, follow through with the warnings and act accordingly to chain or change or not to change if the owner or leasing of the building behaves either in a positive level or in a negative level. The public should realize when a law or an ordinance or a code is passed, it means that the public is not complying and actually wandering out of the letter of the law. When people don't break the law and follow the letter of behaving correctly as a business or as a, as a single person, then we don't pass laws. So in other words, people don't really behave to what we had as codes and ordinances. So we have to behave appropriately and do what we're doing. And I actually endorse that. We are allowed to actually increase the fine higher than a thousand dollars if these people do not want to listen to what we have to say. And thank you very much, Melissa.
Great, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Melissa. Administrative citations and fines for municipal code violations should not be handled as a criminal offense. Last month, as was stated, the city manager introduced the first reading of the administrative citation ordinance, which provides the city of Fortuna code enforcement officers the ability to issue a citation for these types of violations. These citations direct a person to pay a fine to the city. This method of bringing compliance for city ordinance violations is a non-criminal enforcement alternative and is used throughout many governmental entities for several reasons. The first is it provides flexibility in the enforcement of local ordinances. And second, it saves the, the city money from not having to criminally prosecute minor violations in a court of law, which would cost taxpayers more money. A second ordinance was also introduced on the September 21 council meeting regarding administrative fines for violation of the ordinance regulating cannabis, which proposes a sign and a fine, as Dean said, of a thousand dollars for each day the violation continues unabated. Up to this point, there were few actions that the city could take to generate compliance with the cannabis ordinance. With this ordinance, the city now can charge a hefty fine and collect in a variety of ways from folk, from folks who ignore our city ordinances. Enforcement by the city will be through legal means, including judgments, liens on property, collections. And if there is, if there are past due amounts on administrative citations, the city can charge the collection costs. Very importantly though, there is also in place processes to appeal the citation fines and hearing decisions that innocent property owners, renters and hearing decisions are not improperly cited and fined. For the most part, these ordinances will be complaint driven, such as a neighbor reporting a cannabis or cannabis being grown outdoors or a commercial business being run in a residential neighborhood without the proper licensing. However, they do not necessarily have to be complaint driven. They can be reported by a city employee, but it's, the employees will not normally be out patrolling for these types of violations. These ordinances allow our city to safeguard the health, welfare and safety of all of our citizens. Thank you.
He was good. Okay, question number four, you guys doing good? You need a water break or anything? We're coming right along. Okay, good. All right, Dean, you're up again, your number one, here we go.
Wow, boy.
We're going to go Dean, Mike and then Tammy here. Okay, Fortuna is known as the friendly city with great community spirit. In what way is Fortuna also business friendly? As compared to our other neighboring cities, do you believe our ordinances related to starting a business are competitive? What ordinance fees would you reduce, increase or eliminate to encourage new businesses to come to Fortuna? Dean, take it away. Three minutes now, don't get crazy.
I live in sunny Fortuna. I do not know who changed it to the friendly city, but it needs to go back to sunny Fortuna. Fortuna follows the zoning policies whenever a new business intends to locate within our city limits. This business would have already compared our fees and standards with the other nearby cities. It is not the city's obligation to monetarily subsidize any business that has intentions to come to our wonderful location. I am satisfied with the current ordinance and fee structure. Whenever a request is made for an official change, the council will address that at that time for its value and importance. So therefore, I don't feel that any need is being placed to change the fee structure that we have. If a, if a business wants to come to Fortuna, they will come to Fortuna because of our location, our wonderful people and the atmosphere that we have. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Melissa. The city must take an active role in supporting our business community and building a strong and vibrant local economy. I believe it's important to keep our fees low and support our businesses with assistance in dealing with the funding for COVID-19 costs. I believe that Fortuna is very business friendly with many highlight, with many events that highlight, support and promote local businesses. For example, we have the Apple Harvest Festival in October in which every commercial area of Fortuna takes part with food sales, bands and tractor rides. We have celebrations and events just about every month of the year. But probably the most popular is the city's rodeo week, where folks come from all around the country to take part in which has become Humble County's premier attraction. Once this COVID pandemic is over, we'll get back to hosting these great events. At every one of these celebrations and events, the city of Fortuna provides city employees who work long hours to provide the logistics to ensure that these events are safe, secure and enjoyable for all people throughout the year. Also, Fortuna's business license costs are very competitive with other cities in our county. In Fortuna, the most a business license can cost is $465 annually, whereas in Eureka, a business can pay up to $1,000 annually for their net license. And in Arcata, a license could cost up to $629 for a new business. Fortuna is business friendly, but I believe more can be done. The city can designate a liaison at City Hall to help businesses navigate through the red tape of applying and receiving CARE Act funds as well as funds from the newly available Rural Relief Small Business Grant Program from the county. That person could be a conduit between the businesses and the county or any state or federal agency, ensuring that our businesses receive their fair share of funding during this COVID-19 pandemic. We have Spanish speaking owners who find it very difficult, business owners who find it very difficult maneuvering through the language barriers when filing state and federal CARE Act forms and the city could provide assistance to them. Yes, I believe that more can be done to help our businesses keep their doors open as well as attract new businesses for, to Fortuna. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. Tammy?
Thank you. As long as a business is principally permitted in a location they choose, all they would need to start their business is a business license. If they don't have a location, they can contact Fbid for a list of available commercial properties that would fit into their business needs. Fortuna's business licenses are definitely very reasonable and very streamlined to get. Fortuna really tries to support our businesses by bringing in events, providing things for the businesses. When COVID hit, it was very important to me to support our local businesses and try to keep them going. That's one of the reasons that I went down to try to get the encroachment permits waived and streamlined and then loan picnic benches, which actually have very, helped our restaurants a lot through this COVID. Fortuna is a good community and we do support our businesses and the council definitely supports our businesses. So we do everything possible to encourage business to come to Fortuna and when we do get the business to support the business that we have. So shop local, keep our business here. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Tammy. All right, we've been a little, we're going to ask the big question here, number five. Mike, you get to answer this one first and then we're going to follow it up with Tammy and Dean gets the final say on this one. So number five, retail sale of cannabis and cannabis related enterprises have been prohibited in Fortuna since California passed Prop 64 in 2016. By the end of 2020, an estimated retail sales for both medical and recreational marijuana could top $5 billion in California. Looking at the sales tax generated in our neighboring cities like Rialto and Eureka, do you think that the city council should revisit the proposition to light of COVID and financial impact it will have on the city for months and possibly years to come? So Mike, take it away and tell us what you think. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. There are city council candidates who have taken a position on this question. An article in a local publication from May of 2019 indicated a candidate in favor of bringing cannabis businesses to Fortuna. I believe there are unanswered issues and questions that have not been considered that need to be considered before a decision can be made. A short four years ago, the citizens of Fortuna turned away legalizing the possession, use, cultivation, manufacturing, transport and commercial retail sales of non-medical marijuana within the city limits. Fortuna turned away Prop 64 by a 51.2 to a 48.8 margin, percent margin. And although those percentages are close, I've been canvassing many neighborhoods in Fortuna and after discussions with folks, I'm not convinced that a vote would bring a change in people's opinions. There are some folks today who believe that because people would possibly vote in a different, differently now than they did a few short, four years ago, Fortuna should bring cannabis businesses into our town. There are many factors which must be examined before these kinds of decisions should be made. First, considering the Prop 64 outcome, we need to determine if most of our citizens desire to have this kind of business in our town and if it would be a good fit for our existing business community. For example, if you owned a business on Main Street, Fortuna Boulevard or Strong's Creek Plaza, would you want a dispensary next door to your business? Would it be a detriment or beneficial to your store or business to have a dispensary next door? Many of our businesses have a very long history here and the city council must take into consideration what is best for our citizens and businesses. Let's have input from our citizens and business community on this issue and hear what they have to say. Still, another question is if you allow one dispensary to open, how many others would you have to allow? The city of Rialto, for instance, has one dispensary on their main street with a second one in the planning stage and maybe a third. Can we estimate the tax revenue that would be realized by bringing in a dispenser? Before a decision is made, that could significantly affect the entire community. We need answers to these questions. On the other side of the equation, there are communities in which cannabis operations have been beneficial. What about a company that would want to bring in good paying jobs, to bring in good paying jobs with non-THC products and bring in thousands of tax dollars? These and other questions must be considered first before we allow cannabis businesses into our community. I want to approach this with fully knowing what it would involve and I would hope that citizens would ask that of our city council. Thank you. Just in time.
Nice, Mike. Okay, Tammy, your three minutes starts now.
Sorry, forgot to unmute there. It's always important for the city to reevaluate all of our ordinances and cannabis. We actually were setting up a workshop for the community to talk about cannabis. When we first passed this, we passed it with complete ban with the idea that we would revisit this after we saw how these businesses worked in other communities. So time has passed and we were setting that up, but due to COVID, it got postponed. So hopefully after COVID, we'll be able to have another community meeting. There's more to cannabis products than cultivation and dispensaries. Fortuna definitely is not a cultivation city. We have no room for it and it's very impacting. There are a lot of non-impacting businesses. Last year, I kind of stepped way out of my comfort zone. The Cannabis Alliance was having a convention at the River Lodge, so I actually went down there. I don't know a lot about cannabis, but I thought I needed to educate myself on this if we were going to be making decisions on it. So I went down there and I asked for the person in charge, told her who I was and why I was there. She was very receptive, I, she took me around, she showed me a lot of different types of businesses. And there are some actually pretty good ones. I was impressed with one that, where they manufacture patches that you put on for sore muscles or pain, you know, and a company like that would be a non, very non-impacting business that would fit fine into Fortuna. So I think we need to look at some options of, you know, not complete ban of anything. CBD products seem to be, you know, something that are not too impacting. So I think we just need to kind of just check out some of the businesses and see what is there available and what might fit into Fortuna and what the citizens of Fortuna would want. And that's why I think it's real important to have a workshop to talk to people about this and see, you know, what would fit into our city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Dean, let's hear it.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm one of the five original council members that actually passed this moratorium. I'm trying to think either 2008 or 2009. And we were very adamant about not allowing any dispensaries to come into our city. I still stand true to that. I don't think, feel we need a workshop. I don't feel we need to embrace anything that actually has hardcore cannabis. I don't feel we need to embrace anything that actually has hardcore cannabis products. As you know, there are locations in the city that does sell the CBG product. I guess you could probably say that's a lifting of some of the restrictions on a certain level, but the cannabis industry itself, as was mentioned, that it's not being grown in the city. I hate to differ with you on prior court. That's where the illegal grows are occurring. Next to us on Drake Hill Road, in those storage facilities, for many decades, they were growing there. So it is being grown in the city. When we actually had to create our Prop 64 rules, otherwise the state would have shoved them down against our will, we created the need for a hundred-dollar permit if you chose to grow five allowed personal-use marijuana plants on your property. As of this date, the hundred-dollar fee has not been paid by anyone. I repeat that, no one has paid this. It has been a rejection to the city's policies. And again, I do not embrace any kind of marijuana dispensaries anywhere in our city. And what's unique to that is we are looked up by the public living in other cities that they want to live in Fortuna because of our stance. I don't think there's any dispensaries in Ferndale. Nobody's talking about Ferndale and their beliefs. I think Fortuna has its own image. We don't need the extra revenue because we have Prop Measure E, which is going to be extended as Measure G. So in the meantime, if we start to get desperate for revenue, then we may approach a different venue. But otherwise, right now, it is zero ordinance, zero necessities for cannabis facilities in our city. Thank you.
Okay, great. So just to correct you, it's CBD, not G.
CBG, CBG?
CBD. He has a dog.
It's those letters. Everybody knows what they are.
And I think that Ferndale actually has some licensed cannabis farms, so.
I retract that statement. I got misinformation by the wrong source.
Yeah, I think they might have some. So, okay, we are on to our sixth question. This will be answered first by Tammy, followed by Dean, and ending with Mike. According to the county's 2019 Regional Housing Needs Assessment, Fortuna's fair share of projected housing needs to be two-hundred-and-ninety units out of three-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety, ranging from very low income to above moderate income. What steps has the council taken to address homelessness in Fortuna? What are some ways the council could help encourage the construction and additional housing units, including low-income housing? Tammy, take it away.
Thank you. The city has enough areas zoned to fill our quota. We have kept our building permits fees comparable to surrounding cities, and we've tried to streamline our permit process to try to encourage building of new housing. We partner with River Lodge, or River Life, who works with the homeless. Most of our homeless in Fortuna are drug-addicted or mentally ill. River Life has gotten a lot of them into programs or back to their families. So they've taken a lot of care in doing that. As far as, Fortuna doesn't build houses. We do as much as we can to make it easier for people to do it, but that's, you know, that's pretty much most of what we can do. Thank you.
Okay, Dean, this one's you now.
Thank you. During past years, the RENA numbers were as high as seven-hundred-and-fifty. This number was projected to represent ten years' worth of houses and living quarters. That was never mentioned that two-hundred-and-ninety applies to a ten-year period. So in actuality, that is a very low need and request by the state to transition our social economic status footprint as a city. All of the RENA numbers from the very beginning have been in effort to insert into cities the need for very low and low-income housing. Otherwise, the city would have a very different appearance, whether it be middle-class or upper-class or whatever. This is a socialization program being pushed by our state legislature, and it will continue to be until the state legislature's members change. You need to realize that the city embraces contractors and builders' desires to construct their projects within our city limits. We were supporting projects being done by Danco with redevelopment money. Unfortunately, as I've mentioned in prior comments, that the redevelopment funding and money was taken away by the state, even though it was challenged in court, and even though Prop 1A protected it and was passed by the taxpayers, the state legislature stole that money. So in the meantime, when we have any kind of low-income housing projects being brought towards into our city, we have no money to fund them. I want to compliment the fact that we did support Danco with two projects on Stockton, the Stockton Projects and the one on School Street. The city has no obligation to spend any money on homeless. As you know, over the last twenty-plus years, there's been an increase, every increase of the number of people that have come to our city. We passed an ordinance. I did not pass it, but Sue and Tammy passed that ordinance, which was mixed compliance and enforcement mandated by our police officers. I truly support that. As for a homeless shelter, the city once again is not obligated to spend any taxpayers' money. There is a site on South Fortuna Boulevard to the west that would be a location for a private organization to come to build their facility if they so choose to locate in our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Melissa. Addressing homelessness and building low-income housing units are really two different issues. The homeless issue is one whichever community has been wrestling with for quite a few years, including Fortuna. The city has done a pretty good job of cleaning up the creek beds and vegetation around the creeks where the homeless tend to camp. However, Fortuna has lacked a concerted effort to effectively address the homeless population. We can do more to help those people who are interested in moving out of the sphere of homelessness to get the help that they want and need. There are services which can be made available, even though the courts have decided the homeless can be in public places. I don't think that was a very good court decision, nor is it beneficial to the homeless or the city. What can be done? Well, for starters, Fortuna can join the conversation with the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition, which has largely been a city of Eureka and Humboldt County Venture. Some of the steps they are taking toward addressing the homeless issue in and around Eureka could be initiated here. The city should investigate bringing social services and mental health experts and team them up with law enforcement, directing their efforts to a particular person or camp, which has frequently come to the attention of city officials. In this way, individual homeless people could receive the specialized mental health and social service resources that these experts could provide. This would only work if the homeless would agree to this service. But with the cold weather on the way, more of these folks might be inclined to accept this type of help. Regarding the housing needs in Fortuna, those needs are addressed in the general plan update, specifically in the housing element. The council could direct staff to prioritize locating and identifying buildable parcels of land which would be conducive to building affordable housing. The council should support the building industry and local economy to enact policies that support affordable housing for seniors and others while working with city staff within the housing element of the general plan update. The city does need more affordable housing to meet the needs of seniors and others while locating these developments near the resources that those folks need. Thank you.
Great. Okay, that does it for our six initial questions that you guys have so graciously answered today, and now we're gonna break off and do some questions from the audience. Okay, our first question is gonna be answered by Dean, and then we're gonna follow it up by Mike and Tammy. Okay, here we go. "Mobile home parks can increase rent five percent plus the CPI, but not to exceed ten percent a year. Most seniors cannot afford that. The average SSA is one-thousand-three-hundred dollars a month. Rent at Royal Crest runs six-hundred to eight-hundred dollars a month, not considering the utilities. We just got notice rent was going up ten percent. Seniors only get a tiny annual increase in benefits, and it does not begin to cover these increases. Do you support reasonable rent control to allow seniors to remain in their homes? And how will you accomplish it if elected?" All right, Dean, let's hear about the seniors.
At one of our past council meetings, we did have three or four members that lived at Royal Crest come and approach us about asking us for assistance to deter the now conglomerate mobile home magnet across the United States that owns that facility. And the reality to that fact is it is not the city's place to dictate an owner of what kind of rent that they can charge. That would be the same as me telling a member on Main Street that you're only allowed to charge so much for rent for an occupant in your facility. I mean, it's, these are two different things. This is a business, a business that is independent from the council. My suggestion, again, would be contacting your elected officials in the state capital, doing Mike McGuire, Jim Wood, and Congressman Huffman, and allow them to know what your problem is, and to hope that there's a number of other people in the state of California that are under the same kind of increased rent duress, and allow them to follow on to it. It's not push and nudge and kick the ball down the street, but for the council, we have feelings for what you're going through, but unfortunately, we as a council can't do anything. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, let's hear from you.
Thank you, Melissa. I do agree that I think statewide, this issue needs to be handled, and especially in light of the situation with the COVID-19 pandemic. I think that that's gonna be a while before we run out of that particular pandemic, and I think that the seniors are, in particular, are going to need some assistance when it comes to rent control. I agree that there's little that the city of Fortuna can do, and I believe that landlords oftentimes are unable to accept the increase in their fees in their, and so must pass those kinds of costs on to their renters. I am in favor of rent control with regard to seniors, though. And I think that if the city can look at something like that, we need to do that.
Great. Tammy, let's hear it. Go for it.
Okay. Mobile home parks are kind of a different entity. The city does not have a lot of control over them. They are actually controlled under the state. But I have checked into this, and the city can do some rent control on mobile home parks. I do believe we need to look into this a little bit due to the fact that these are seniors with fixed incomes, to see if there's something that we can't do to help with that. There is an initiative on the ballot. I haven't read it a whole lot yet, checked into it yet, but that's, it's a rent control issue, and that's twenty-one. So I don't, I can't tell you anything about that because I haven't read it, but it is on the ballot. But I do think that we do need to check into this. I have already asked that we have a meeting after this COVID thing is over, and I've talked to quite a few people up at Royal Crest about this, and they would like to have a public meeting to talk to us about if there's anything we could do to keep this under control. They are kind of, they own their home, but they don't own their property. And when they got in there, they were on a fixed income, and this continues to go up, and they are getting to the point to where they can't even afford to pay just the property, and they still have the house payment to do. So I think we need to check into this and see if there's a way we can help.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, another question from the audience. We're gonna have Mike answer this one first. "What have you done, or will you do if elected, to secure the county Measure Z funding for the Fortuna Police Department Drug Task Force Agent and the School Resource Officer?" Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Melissa. I think we've covered that with a prior question, but certainly I'm in favor, as I said, of Measure G.
Z.
Measure Z, I'm sorry. In relation to Z and G, but I would absolutely contact and be in contact with the Board of Supervisors, with the sheriff, and the chiefs of police throughout Humboldt County to ensure that Fortuna gets their fair share of Measure Z funding. Much of this money can go to equipment, and it can supplement the budget, the police department's budget, in that fashion. I think the School Resource Officer is extremely important. We have one dedicated School Resource Officer for all of the elementary schools and the high school, and I think it's extremely important that that person be on the school campuses every day that school is in progress, as well as the drug enforcement officers, the Drug Task Force officers. I think that we need to have those officers concentrating on Fortuna and some of the issues that we've had in Fortuna. We have had success with several major arrests here in Fortuna lately, and we'd like to certainly see that continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, Tammy, you get to answer next, and then we'll follow it up with Dean.
Okay, this is my puppy here. We wouldn't have either one of these positions if it wasn't for me. We were actually denied these positions when we first applied for it. And that's where I said, oh, no, 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 we're getting these. So I went to Rex and Estelle and talked to them about going to the Board of Supervisors, what I needed to do. So I went to that meeting with the denial from the advisory committee to that, told them why we needed these. The first year, it was just the Drug Task Force Officer. The following year, it was the School Resource Officer. Explained why we needed these positions, gave them lots of facts and information. The Drug Task Force Officer isn't just for Fortuna. Fortuna didn't have any drug enforcement south of Eureka because we had no one on that Drug Task Force. So I applied for, lobbied for this. We actually got it, which I was very pleased. We got that position funded, and we've had a lot more enforcement in Southern Humboldt now, since we do have that person on there. They work as a county. They work the whole county. So that position has been very vital to drug trafficking in the Ill River. The following year, I asked to chief, I worked with him writing these grants to get these positions. I asked to add the School Resource Officer, so we did that. And I had to plead for that. One of the people said they didn't feel like a School Resource Officer was very important, and I asked them, do you think the safety of our children in school is not important? And so anyway, we got that one funded, too, and every year I continue to go up there and plead for these positions. You pretty much have to fight for these. You pretty much have to fight for these positions every year to get them funded. And that's why I want to hopefully get them permanently funded. I've already talked to the sheriff about that. And we were going to ask for it this year. It was almost approved, but then COVID hit and they had to cut back.
Yeah, Tammy, I gotta cut you off.
She can have my, she can have my time.
Cut you off. It's a good thing I don't have Trump on me. Okay, you're up.
Thank you. And as an incumbent, I am truly supporting my fellow incumbent Tammy Trent for what she has really done above and beyond the call of duty for fighting for these officers that we've gotten funded by Measure Z. Measure Z does not have any sunset date, so if you want to see that funding being given and fought for back to Fortuna, God bless her, man. She needs to get reelected. I'm done.
Oh, those are nice words, Dean. All right, you guys, there's a couple more questions to go still. And Tammy, you get to answer this one first. Are you in favor of term limits for city council? Why or why not? Dean, you're gonna go next after Tammy and then Mike. So you guys have been prepared. Hey Tammy, go.
Um, no, I'm not in favor of term limits for city council. I think it takes a little while to get educated on city council. I think if you go beyond your ability or life in city council and where you're not doing a good job, I think you can just be voted out. But as long as you're doing a good job and representing the citizens of Fortuna and your city and they vote you back in, I think that that's perfectly fine and you need to do it. That that kind of forces us to keep doing our job and doing our job well. It's a volunteer job, pretty much, and you know, it's something that you have to enjoy to do. As long as you enjoy doing it, run for reelection, as long as you're representing your city well. Thank you.
Great. Tammy, Dean, go right ahead and answer this one.
Well, being the old geezer that's been on the council for sixteen and a half years, if anybody wants to have a question given to me about what happened in 2002 or 2006 or 2010, and in fact, anybody wants to ask me anything about what's occurred over those sixteen and a half years, I'm not senile. I can remember. And that's one of the gifts, that's a benefit for somebody who's been on a council longer than a four-year term. Mel Birdie was on for, I think, 26 years. Doug Strill knew what was the first step taken in by man in Fortuna and Roneville. And he could archive and be asked questions. And between the two of us, we could actually answer just about everything. So I want, list history. You know what happened in the past. And if somebody approaches us and thinking that we don't remember and they want to trick us, you know, even though good sometimes is suppressed by evil, you actually can stop them from having that happen. Your knowledge and your skill set of learning your protocols and policies and the ordinances and the manner of how you behave, that's an important thing that takes sometimes over a year for a new person to learn. Your contacts with other fellow council members from the other cities, that is just as important. It builds a bridge for us to be able to benefit as a whole, not as an individual city. And you are first and foremost elected based by the public support. If they feel you're not representing them fully and wholeheartedly, then they have the choice to vote you out. But term limits, no. As for the legislature, for the national and the state, oh yeah. But for the small, small components which are supervisors in cities, they need to actually have long-term until the public removes them. Thank you very much, Melissa.
Welcome. I've never heard thank you so much before.
Well, I like it. I gotta say that.
You guys gotta teach my kids. All right, Mike, let's hear.
Thank you Melissa. I said it again.
I know. I like it.
The council is much different than state or federal elected positions. The voting public is unhappy with the job a council person is doing. They can vote that council person out and vote in a new, refreshing voice with a new viewpoint and a new outlook. But I don't think term limits would be a good thing for a city council. Thank you.
Sure, and to the point. Okay, we have another question. This might be, if anybody has any questions in the attendees, feel free to send a chat. We have about maybe 10 minutes left. I think Renee, if you wanna shake your head at me, yes, that'd be great. Okay, the order of this question is gonna go to Dean first, followed by Mike and then Tammy will end. What actions could the city council take to attract new development to the old mill site? This 70-plus acre freeway visible site sits empty and does not give travelers the image of what Fortuna really looks like. Dean, go right ahead.
Well, I thank you very much.
Welcome.
When we passed the general plan, one of the things that we did not do was address zoning. Currently, 60 of that acres of the 70 is zoned heavy industrial. One of the 10-acre parcels, which is actually could be accessed off of South Fortuna Boulevard, is light industrial. When I, when I spoke in favor of a big box mall in 2002, Fred Katz, who came from Roseville, actually made a presentation in front of our council trying to actually make this project occur. Unfortunately, we did not have a general plan that was updated, so that stopped it. 2008, as you know, was a calamity for the city and the state with the collapse of our economy. So that project really didn't occur. Then redevelopment funding, which would have been support of any kind of development on the Palco property, again, was stolen by the state of California and we do not have any redevelopment funding money. Since Humboldt Redwood bought the Palco property, the original price in 2002 was $7 million. If I have not heard incorrectly, it is now $12 million. They're pricing themselves out of the sale of that property. We had discussed of actually having light industrial and housing on that site, but without an actual sale of that property and an interest by some builders or even a light industrial. One of my other ideas that I had was actually having another complementary fire and light facility and having a mobile, mobile home facility, just like they have in Hoopa, built on that site, which would be both beneficial. You know that fire and light is gone, so there's a market for that product. And for creating modular homes, as in Hoopa, as I understand, again, with misinformation maybe, Hoopa is not meeting the demand, but here locally, you already know that we want to have a trailer park built based on mobile homes. Thank you very much, Melissa.
All right, okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you Melissa. With the current old mill sites, the city, I believe, should be working with the current owners to attract developers to bring in a combination of commercial and residential development. Fortuna is a hub of Southern Humboldt, Northern Mendocino and Trinity County, and we attract people from all over. If we had a commercial residential kind of a development there, a quality development, we would be receiving so much tax money from all of the people that shop and live in those counties, Humboldt, Mendocino and Trinity, in addition to all of those people that are tourists that are traveling up and down Highway 101. I also believe that we, there's enough property there that we could attract some type of industry. I don't know what types of industry that we could look at. We discussed a little bit about non-THC cannabis. That might be a possibility down the road. But I do believe that that property down there being over 70 acres is large enough that it could attract commercial, residential, as well as industrial. And the city can work with developers to try to entice them to come in and develop some kind, put some kind of a development in that area.
Great. Thank you. Tammy, let's hear you up there.
Thank you Melissa. Fortuna, this is one of the things I was talking about in my opening statement about having the meeting to talk about this project. Fortuna is in some contact with the mill property and we're gonna be working on a master plan to plan out some of that. The mill property is more than one lot. It's many, many lots within there. And we want to make sure that somebody doesn't buy the middle lot or buy the outside lots and land off the middle one. So we're working on a master plan to kind of see how businesses can flow. That lot goes from Kenmar to, or to, Kenmar to 12th Street, all along the freeway there. So it's got a lot of good potential to go there. So I think the main thing is working on that master plan and continuing to work with the mill site to try to maybe bring some businesses and maybe collaborate with some other development companies within the city. College of the Redwoods, you know, may be able to help with some ideas there. It really is a good property and would really benefit the city if we could get something moving there.
Great. Well, that concludes all the questions for today's candidate forum, you guys. You guys did a great job. I'm gonna let Renee talk, but thank you guys for coming. It was a pleasure.
Yeah, I guess, well, if you guys want to wrap up with just a one-minute closing statement and then we'll say goodbye. And thanks again for participating and everybody watching. We appreciate the support and for you guys being here. So why don't we, let's see, the last person was Tammy, Dean, Mike. So let's go, Dean, you can kick off and then we'll go Mike and Tammy and then we'll end the meeting.
Thanks very much Renee. My name is Dean Glazer. They say if you say it three times, people remember. My name is Dean Glazer. And my name is Dean Glazer. I'm currently your elected Fortuna City Councilman. I have been dedicated servant for 16 and a half years. Fortuna has been my home for almost 50 years, so over a third of my life has been dedicated to guiding the growth and direction of our great city, Fortuna. I am fiscally conservative, a fighter for honesty and transparency, a defender against anyone or any organization who will do harm against you, the city of Fortuna. Health, safety and welfare always come first, no matter who attacks me for my stance or for my vote. In this election, I know I am the best candidate. Please elect Dean Glazer as your Fortuna City Councilman. And in closing, God bless America and our troops. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, you're up.
Thank you Melissa. And I would like at this point to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Melissa, you and Renee for hosting this forum today. We appreciate it. As your city council member, I will take an active role working to meet the needs of Fortuna. I will listen to all voices and perspectives. I do, as I said, have the proven leadership qualities, experience and common sense in decision-making that sets me apart from the other candidates. I have experience as four years on the city council and eight years on the high school board of trustees. I believe that with my experience on those agencies, that my common sense decisions are a leadership quality. And so I ask you to join my friends, family and neighbors to vote for Mike Lozzy for the Fortuna City Council. Thank you.
Great. Do you want to say it a couple more times?
Lozzy for city council, Mike Lozzy for city council, vote for you.
Sorry Dean, I had to, I had.
It's okay. This is a democracy. This is all right.
Okay, and finally Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain why I am the best candidate for city council. We have had a challenging year and it's not over yet. It is important for the council members to have the experience and vision necessary to keep our community safe and functioning under a balanced budget. I am proud to ask for your vote because I know I am the right person for this job. No one will work harder for you, for you, on your behalf than I will. A vote for me is a vote for stronger Fortuna, a stronger business development environment and a stronger and safer community. I am not only supporting the Fortuna Police Employees Association, but they support me. And like them, you can trust me to continue to support public safety in our community. We are a true community and I truly do love Fortuna. Tammy Trent, Tammy Trent, Tammy Trent.
Good girl.
To wrap it up, Tammy.
Awesome. Thank you again, everyone. I really appreciate it. It was great having you all here. I'm glad we could do this. Everybody, don't forget to vote and thanks so much and we'll see you next time. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks Renee. Thanks Melissa.